Lord, we thank you for another year and a new year that you've given to us with the opportunities and even the challenges that lie ahead. We pray that you will guide us, be with our city leaders. We pray that you will give them wisdom to meet every challenge in the days ahead in accordance to your will, with always your will and the benefit of our community in mind. In Jesus' name, amen.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, in your package you had the minutes from our December 21 meeting?
Motion.
And a motion? And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Committee and department reports. The chamber.
Good evening. In December, our largest office was on promoting local stores. In conjunction with the Caring Council, we completed the Christmas cash giveaway, and the winner of that was Ms. Blair Mobley. She received $1,000 in Kennet cash. So, the good thing was she shopped at 20 local stores throughout the holiday season, and then she was rewarded for that, and then that money will also go back purely into Kennet stores. So, I think that was a well-received promotion from the businesses and from the consumers, and we'll look forward to doing that again next year. We also highlighted specific stores who participated in the holiday wrap-up event at the end of December. We used a lot of targeted social media ads to promote shopping in Kennet, and we hope that that boosted sales tax revenue for you all, and all of our advertising was well-received by the stores. They thanked us for putting that focus on them throughout November and December. Coming up, we are already starting to think about spring events. The first major event that we will help advertise this year is the Kent JC Sholomy State Barbecue Cook-Off. That's set for May 4th through 7th at the Delta Fairgrounds, and the 100 Mile Yard Sale will follow at the end of May, the 26th through the 30th. It will go from Kennet to Jackson, and it will just follow our typical routine holiday Memorial Day weekend. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any tax numbers to report to you. After the meeting tonight, we will have a finance meeting to go over the semi-annual budget, review the numbers, and I will give you a report next time.
Fire.
Mayor, council members, a few things. One thing I need to kind of get out of the way. A little over a month ago, we received a grant to purchase a Zoll Cardiac Monitor. And this monitor is what's used by our Squad 51 paramedic unit, and it's a fairly pricey unit. It's $34,411.17. We did receive a grant from the state to purchase this, and met with our fire committee some weeks ago, and it was brought about from the committee's standpoint that we go ahead and purchase this utilizing YARPA money. And then, once we receive the money from the state for the grant, it will go back into that fund. So, we need the council approval this evening to see about getting that done.
I'll make a motion in a second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Other events kind of going on. Right now, we've kind of had a whole outbreak of illnesses within our department. We do have one person that did sustain some COVID symptoms, and we've got them on bedrest and so forth for a lot of time. And then, we have a couple more that have flu-like symptoms, but again, fevers, so we've got them home as well. So, we've done quite well all this time with the pandemic, and now, all of a sudden, everyone's kind of getting sick. So, again, one thing to kind of note with a lot of things going on, there's a lot of sickness and illnesses going around, you know, the fluctuation in temperatures that we've experienced. I mean, the nice balmy 70-degree weather we've had, dropping down to the 30s. A lot of illness is going on out there. We have seen a recent increase within the past couple of weeks of general illness calls, fevers, flu-like symptoms, things of that nature. So, we really had to go back and up our game again on what we were doing with COVID response. Today, I did send a memo out to our department that we're kind of going on a pandemic lockdown within our department. And what this does is it keeps all visitors away from our fire stations and limits unnecessary travel from station to station to administration offices and so forth. Fire training will all kind of be done online this month. Again, we know within the next two weeks, we just don't want to spread no more than what we have to, so this is what we're doing as well. Anything else here? And that's kind of what I had. Brenda, do I want to bring up the unit right now?
I will.
With the discussion of the illnesses going around, we knew with this building up here, City Hall specifically, that some different ideas about how to keep things a little bit healthier. One of the main things when it comes to viruses and so forth is having UV lights in an AC unit, your HVAC units, to help curb those viruses, about 99% active. And we had a company come in today and just kind of gave us a ballpark quote of how much it would cost to have these air scrubbers put in in our existing units. And with them coming in and looking at everything, it was going to run about $1,000 apiece. And again, this is for y'all's discussion for the future, what had you, but it'd be $1,000 apiece, and there's five units on this building. But I think it would be very worthwhile for the events that's kind of happened in the past. Don't know why we haven't ever discussed it up to this point, but I do think that's something that would be very, very crucial to have in this building here. So, I did want to throw that to you all for future discussion if it possibly needs to be done.
Well, three of the units will have to be replaced. It's on the end of, so we'll talk more about it here in a little bit.
And that's where we may need to redo the bids.
And include those.
Include the air scrubbers.
Include them on the new units, plus install two in the used units, in the remaining units.
It may be a little cheaper that way, too.
Yeah.
With the holiday season, didn't quite get the year-end reports quite finished up Monday, and usually so, that'll be coming up next week. That's great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, human resources.
You guys aren't going to like this tonight. Speaking of COVID and lockdown and all that stuff, we do have a new COVID protocol that we came up with, with we had some help from the Dunkle Kennet Health Center, et cetera. And would you go ahead, Brenda, and send a copy of that out to all of us here?
Okay, Elliot, it's in the packet.
Okay, good. All right, so everybody, all the department heads, check that out for us, okay? We also wanted to bring up that the Ultimate Fitness has changed its charges from $15 per month to $35 a month, and so, we decided to extend the payment for that for the month of January, so we, as a council, can decide what we want to do about that. And if we want to continue, if we want to do a specific amount, let people go, say, continue giving them 15 bucks, or we'll bring that up. Be thinking about that, and we'll bring that back up next week here, our next meeting, and kick that around in the finance committee.
Who will?
We also are looking into the Juneteenth federal holiday. It started last year, and it is a federal holiday, but right now, we are going to table it until we could determine the impact that it would have on the economic impact that it would have on the city of being closed another day. And so, we're looking at that. Could that not be employees floating holiday, where if they need to go to the dentist or doctor or something, they could use that? Then you would meet clothes down all at one.
We wouldn't have everybody closed. Good idea.
We want to see bids on cleaning crew, and we want to have the bids also submitted with the cleaning supplies being provided by the company that does the cleaning. And if that doesn't work, if we're not having luck with that, we talked about just having a 2:00 on Friday, everybody clean, and try to keep this thing, keep the building as clean as what we can. We'll see what we come up though with bids on that. We're looking at pay scale recommendations for department heads, and we've, Brenda's made some calls for us, and we have about 10 cities that we can compare prices to or salary to, and we're going to, and we're all studying that right now. And we will kind of come up with a way to determine pay scales for department heads and employees and all that, and they will help us with that. And department heads are going to have to have some input on that, so you guys might need to consider, and y'all might need to consider the fact that we're going to be doing that and be prepared to meet with us. We need, department heads turn in their job evaluation sheets, so we can see about that. We're after that now. Okay, we're looking, we're going to discuss with you sometime about financing, what we want to do about City Hall and expansion of that. And then, we had the, a couple of the committees together, this was actually a month or so, more than that actually, and we had a, we looked at ways of keeping our long-term employees happy, and we've been kind of focusing on that, trying to get the people that have been with us for years happy about that. And we looked at our scale for vacation, and we have vacation accrues up until 15 years, and after 15 years, there's no more vacation granted. And so, we looked at that, and we, actually, at that meeting, we had enough people to, we had enough of the city council there that we could approve it at that point, but I wanted to bring it up here officially. And we came up with, after 25 years, we want to add another five days of vacation, and it's going to affect us by four or five employees, probably, what we're looking at.
Three at the street department and one at the park department that I know of. I don't know of anybody else that's been here over 25.
And the chances of it being used very much, it may be a little bit slim, but...
Actually, Bill, I'll take it back to two at the street department, because we just had one retire.
That's right. And we're doing some things. I'll talk to you.
Three that I know of.
We're making some adjustments on that, too.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm going to make a motion that we, and I think most of you all have voted on it, but I want to make a motion that we extend 25-year employees an extra five days of vacation.
How many days do they get now?
They get the same as everybody after 15, 4, 20, 20, I'm sorry. So, the fiscal cost to the city has been minimal because of the few numbers of employees there. So, that's my motion.
And we have a motion in a second to extend 25 years to five days vacation. All in favor?
Paul, how's that going to work out with your shift guys? Is that two, three, four days?
Yeah.
The 24, 48 rather than five days, it'd be about, what, three days to jump up additional three days?
I don't think we're going to have any employees that...
Do you have any employees outside? Do you have any?
But doesn't need to be looked at. Not right now.
Paul will after maybe.
All right, motion carries.
That'll do it.
You made it.
I have the end-of-the-year report, and for 2021, we took in 660 dogs. We returned 109 to owners, and eight of those were extremely vicious, for one case, and then we had another total of 24, which were either too sick to vet and save, or was vicious, mostly vicious. And those 24 were euthanized. That's our highest rate we've had in probably 12 years. So, that's kind of a blow, but that was, we discussed it, and that was our choice. So, we had nine adopted and 472 were transferred to rescues, mostly out of state. And all of those dogs were vetted and fed by donations. The city was out no money on the 660 dogs, except for the euthanasia, and donations does not pay for that. We also had a $1,000 donation from Ms. Sue McNutt in honor of her husband, Tom McNutt, which passed away a couple of years ago. He had been a big supporter of KHD for quite some time, and she continues every year to donate in his memory. And our furball tree that we have out at Dr. Mobley's, that was like a huge success, so we've been doing really well as far as that goes with donations. Any other questions?
A lot of work.
Mayor, council, tonight, I'd like to just give you your end stats of what we did back in 2021. The number of calls of service that we had was 22,717 calls came through our 911 center. During that time, we had 3,716 stops, 117 individuals were arrested for DOD in that month, or in that year. Officers worked 581 accidents, 213 burglaries, assaults. We had 772 assaults, shot 1,835, property damage 221, and then citizen assists was 16,001. Now, some of those were caused by the fire department for Squad 51 and stuff like that, so all that is included in there. We also worked five homicides. Unfortunately, we had homicides, and we had cleared all five of them with arrest. Also, under our K-9 program, remember Rocky was deployed in March of 2021? During that time, in just sort of time we've had him on the street, Rocky has led to 43 arrests. He's completed 11 tracks, apprehended 10 suspects. Rocky was deployed 94 times this past year. He's led to a seizure of 2,999 grams of illegal narcotics. Also, seizure of 128 drug-related items. He attended 225 hours of training, which I told Aaron Mays, our K-9 handler, had to go through those hours with him. And also, seizure of 10 firearms, and also firearm-related, illegal firearms. So, without doubt, our K-9 program has been successful so far. I can't say enough good about what Corporal Mays has done with the dog. He spends a lot of time, and without y'all's support for the K-9 program, none of that would have been possible. So, I want to say thank you. Other than that, that's all I have at this time. I think you, thank you.
Tell Corporal Mays thank you for the effort. I'm going to let Keith give most of, but Terry, I need to kind of, we have a situation with, you're aware of, with one of the alleys and access to the alley, and I have a solution for it, but I want to make sure with you that it's an acceptable solution. Okay? All right. Go ahead, Keith.
Mayor, council members, during our 2021 construction season, Knuckle contractors replaced 11 intersections for a total of 24,182 square feet. And we've got it down to where we, now we're just going to have to pick the worst of the ones to finish them out, because we're getting pretty close to being done. Hopefully, next year or two, we'll have all the intersections done that are concrete. They also performed stormwater work on three of those intersections, replacing the pipe underneath the road, so that if we have any issues in the area that we have to do any stormwater work and replace any pipes, we won't have to tear the intersections up. They've already got new pipe under them. So, we've already made it where we can tap into those without having to get into the intersections. Robertson Asphalt during the 2021 asphalt season overlaid seven streets with 1,539 tons of asphalt. They laid 1,512 tons of asphalt over nine gravel roads and got those paved. I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers of how many we got left, but we'll have that at the next meeting. We're narrowing in on it. I think coming this year, we're planning to have them all done, so we won't have any more gravel roads in Kennet anyway. It was a total of 3,051 tons of asphalt for the 2021 season, and we got the walking trail sealed from one end to the other. So, that's something that we have to maintain, I believe, for 20 years, 20 to 25 years. We have to have it accessible and in good shape, so we're pretty good right now on it. Oriole persons have started preliminary work on Delta Peanut Road out there. They've come taking some grade shots and done a little bit of trying to put the crown back in the road. Weather permitting, they're going to try to get started here pretty soon to get it concreted. It's supposed to get cold again. They don't want to do a whole lot of concrete work when it's real cold, but they do have blankets they can put on it with it get down a little bit chilly. The 916 loader that was broke down out at the dump is fortunately at the shop now, but it's still broke down. We have found out what's wrong with it, and we've got parts ordered to get it going again, and hopefully, within the next week or two, we'll be able to get it back up. The parts were ordered, and they should be in in a couple of days, hopefully.
That's all right.
The parts are 1,100 and something dollars for the parts, but we've already got a $3,000 bill. We got one, a thousand from one guy that looked at it, and 2,400 from the guy that actually, the guy that tore apart and found the part and going to put it back together. He's also, right now, while he's waiting on the parts, he has got the wood chipper going that we got from the park department, so hopefully, we had the issues with the fuel tank, but we had one that we'd taken off of an old air compressor that we hung on to, that hoarding thing, I guess, that I knew one day we would use that, and I told Gerald we were going to, when he wanted to throw it away, so...
He must have gotten rid of it, too.
Yeah, so he put that on there today, and hopefully, we're going to have that lined out and going pretty soon, so we'll be able to use that. I don't have a whole lot of end-of-the-year stuff yet. We're still working on some of it. I do have some for the compost. End-of-the-year numbers at compost, we took in 4,247 loads of limbs, 1,199 loads of leaves, 838 loads to the dumpster. We sold 82 loads of compost, 23 loads of mulch, and we took in 215 tires to the tire dumpster. With that being said, sometime around May, we're no longer going to be able to take tires. They've informed us that they won't haul them off anymore after May, so we won't have that out there anymore after that. And that's all we've got for the street department. If y'all have any questions.
We going into stormwater?
All right, I want to mention this. I think this was interesting. Our street sweeper collected 937 tons of debris from city streets. So, last year was 866 tons. This year, with the new street sweeper, 937 tons. So, that is a lot of stuff that we're taking out of the drainage system.
Not going in storm drains.
Yeah, not going down the storm drains, not clogging us up.
And this consists of cups, bottles, cans, syringes, tappers, everything.
No more bowling balls?
No, we haven't found any more bowling balls yet.
Go ahead.
We have got both of the ditches mowed now, as much as we can get on the outside. Hopefully, if, not hopefully, I really don't want it to freeze, but if it does freeze, hopefully, we'll be able to get in the ditch and get a lot of it that's down in there that we can't reach, and some of it where they've got fences built and we can't drive alongside of there. We're going to try to do that. If it gets hard enough, we can get down in there. But we've got everything on both ditches that we can get from outside the ditch. The only other thing we've got for stormwater is the new drainage project that we did in 2021. We've been looking at them every time it rains, and so far, they're working out real good. Actually, a lot of the bad places we had in the past, one being Tatum and Jackson, now is, there's places that are way worse than it is when it rains hard now. So, we've definitely made good steps in getting rid of that. Another one we're hoping is going to be around over on Vandivander. We got the two new pipes put in there, which is part of the Jackson and Tatum drainage. So, we're hoping that the people get with us with the pipeline in here this month, and we can get something going on that, too. And that's all we've got for stormwater.
We're always going to have a problem, though, when the area outside the city is full, when the ditch is outside the city is full, we don't have any place for our water to go. So, if it's bad enough, we're always going to have an issue.
Yeah, we're not going to get rid of flooding. We're going to have flooding. But, and like Bill said, when it's, when the ditch is full, there's nowhere for it to go. It's just going to take time. But the thing about it is that, you know, when the ditch is not full, it's going to go away a lot quicker than it did, because pipes are open and it can flow. But, and a lot has to do with, like he said, the ditch is out of town. If they're grown up and full of stuff.
Who's maintaining those?
I think there's a Little River Drainage District or Drainage District Number Three or something. I don't know. The county digs from the bypass on out past the lagoon, I think, and after that, I don't know. And they usually do a snipe slew from like the highway there by the cemetery on out around to Monsanto Road, I guess it is. They do on down through that way. After that, I'm really not sure. Thank y'all.
I've been working with the stormwater engineer on getting our stormwater reports and everything. We've got down to the final draft on our five-year stormwater plan. It's due now. Hopefully, I can get with Keith this week and next week, and we can get that ironed out. As soon as it gets our final approval, then we'll be having a, oh, a meeting for the public, a public meeting, to approve any discussion on the five-year plan. And then, our stormwater report is due on February 28th. So, as soon as I can get the draft done on the five-year plan, we've got to get the, and talked to DNR today. They're having trouble with their website. They're completely revamping their website, which the forms for the reports are not there yet. So, she said that she was going to try to send me some hard copies so I can get started on that. So, that's all I have.
Let's hook the stormwater committee meeting with that citizens meeting, so we can get all of that done in one day.
All right. I think industrial is met. Senior citizens?
We haven't had meetings yet with the holidays, but we're going to have to because of the next quarter, a lot of it.
Nothing on unfinished new business? In your package was the air conditioners, but with the information that Paul was giving us for the air scrubbers?
I'll make a motion. We rebid it.
Rebid it?
They're going to be...
So, we need to rebid with UV scrubbers.
Paul, Jane, we'll get the fire stations, get people in there.
That was going to be up for discussion with our committees. I know, you know, she needs something out there for the others and our system as well, so it may be something we look at for the street department, for their main office building, and yeah, maybe some other building could need to look at as well.
Okay. And so, we have a motion in a second. All in favor on rebidding for the UV scrubbers?
Aye.
So, my motion carries. We'll rebid exactly the three that we bid before and see if they can add in UV scrubbers. Okay. The other thing, Randy Baker's appointment needs to be reapproved or reappointment to the CLGW board.
Motion.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right.
All right. Uh, mayor's report, we'll keep this brief, that it's, uh, uh, right now, you know, you just have the holidays and seasons, everybody else, the exposure rate, uh, whether it's flu, whether it's COVID, whatever you wanna consider it. Um, and still, just continue proper health, sanitary, wash your hands, uh, you know, try and cover your mouth when you cough, uh, that if you're drinking ice cold water, it makes you cough, that's like cold water, it's not cold. Uh, and, uh, but it's just, uh, you know, your health is yours, it's your responsibility. So, lots of water, lots of rest, you know, get your, your good nutrition, um, you know, keep your body healthy, and it'll help, help your, help you stay healthy. Um, our next meeting, uh, I will not be in country, Mr. Miller. Uh, I'll be on my way back. Uh, I leave for Liberia next Thursday with our church, we're going to, uh, Buchanan, Liberia, Africa. And, uh, so, uh, I would be out, so I need you to, uh, fill in. And, uh, but other than that, it's just, twenty twenty-one is in our rearview mirror, twenty twenty-two is now in front of us. It is gonna be whatever you're gonna make it. Um, if you can get up and think and take on the world, or you can sit there and think that it's, uh, you know, it's gonna beat you down. So, whichever direction you wanna look at it, try and look at it in a positive fashion. Uh, and it's a new year, it's a new start. Whether you make a New Year's resolution or not, I make the same one every year. And it's to, uh, not make it, that way I can make it and break it at the same time, by 2001, I've already made it and broken. Uh, but it's still, it's a time to look at and rethink what you're gonna do. What's the council gonna do, what's the city gonna do? Uh, there's always changes, so if you, uh, feel like you wanna be a part and help the city work and grow forward, come to city council meetings, show up, you know, all of our, uh, uh, different committee meetings, those are all public. You know, come to them, we post them out there, so whatever you can find out, and a lot of them are talked about here, so, uh, get involved and help. It's, uh, you've got a whole bunch of people here that need a whole bunch more help. So, just, uh, stay safe and, uh, look forward to, uh, what twenty twenty-two has for us. Uh, time for any public comment?
I got a question.
Okay.
Do you have an update on the hospital?
I don't.
How about you, Bill?
Going in that, they're not answering call.
Who's they, the new?
The new, so that will be, I, now that we have our, um, hospital committee, our, yeah, hospital committee emails and all that stuff, we'll be getting together. We've got, uh, three or four people on the city council that wanna be on there, recruited, uh, Dr. Jane, and I'm still talking to some of the other local physicians about being on there, and we're gonna get it together pretty quick here this month.
Do we know if the property changed ownership?
No, I haven't heard anything yet.
Still, we'll see people working on it.
Yeah, it's, yeah. The last thing I'm gonna say then would be, you know, sometime late January, maybe early February, you get all the paperwork done.
Okay, keep us updated.
Okay. All right. Uh, anybody else have a comment? So, we don't need closed session?
Nope.
No? Okay, we need, uh, motion to Jerry and, uh.
I have a motion.
Okay, a motion?
Send it.
All right, I'll debate it.
Aye, aye.